Okay. Good evening, everyone. We'll start with a brief announcement here tonight. We are having our monthly May Borough Council Meeting using the Zoom platform. We're glad you've joined us virtually for this meeting. Participants attending tonight's virtual meeting via live stream through our website may provide public comment during the public participation and public hearing portion of this meeting. Your comment will be received and read aloud by staff members so that all of council can hear the question. Participants must log in as guests and provide their name and address via live stream in order to participate. Please note that there will be approximately a 10-second delay between the live stream chat and us receiving it, so bear with us through this process. Thank you again for joining, and we will now begin our May Borough Council Meeting. Gavel in. We'll start with a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, I will defer to the Borough Manager for roll call.
Mr. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Dalton. Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Present.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Present.
Mayor Herschler.
Here.
The manager, I know the assistant manager is on, and the chief of police and the solicitor, you have a quorum, sir.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the approval of previous council meeting minutes. We have two meetings to consider, both our regular April 14th meeting minutes as well as our emergency meeting on April 29th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on April 14th as well as the emergency meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Soto. Any questions on the motion, any corrections to the minutes, or any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. And with that, we'll move in. I don't believe we have any presentations for tonight's agenda.
No, sir.
So with that, we'll move into our first round of public participation. Again, any members of the public wishing to participate tonight, we'd ask that you log in as a guest and provide your name and address via the live stream chat that is available on the website livestream. And please note that there's probably a 10-second delay between entering the question and us receiving it here virtually. Jim, do you see anything?
There is no public participation at this time.
Okay. Wait just a moment more, just in case. Okay, with that, we'll move into communications and council participation. Any members of council with updates or correspondence?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kirchner.
If I may.
Absolutely.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to note the passing of Ron Turmac, who retired police officer, spent 41 years on the police force. I knew him as a sergeant for about 20 years or so up until he retired. Probably 15 years or so ago. But Ron was a great guy, a very conscientious officer. For a very short while, he was also acting chief of police. He served the community well, and I just want to acknowledge his service for 41 years and pass condolences on to his wife Joyce and and his family. And we really, I, Ron was a great guy, had a great sense of humor, and I'm sorry to hear of his passing. I also want to add one other thing. I want to give a shout out to Borough staff for being attentive to an issue we've had on the eastern perimeter of Friendship Field with a number of Trees of Heaven up there. There's a cluster up there, and earlier in the spring, the Borough tree contractor was up there and took out a number of those trees. So I just want to pass on my thanks to Borough staff for being attentive to that issue. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner, and our condolences to the Turmac family. Any other members of council with any updates tonight? With that, we'll move into the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you also, Mr. Kirchner, for remembering Sergeant Turmac and his family at this time. So, dear friends, I just want to thank all of you for being here and joining us tonight on this virtual council meeting. For many of us, the current COVID-19 situation has been without a doubt one of the most challenging and defining moments in our lives. It has brought grief to some, financial and other difficulties to many, and enormous changes to the daily lives of us all. I hope in the days and years to come, everyone will be able to take pride in how our Phoenixville community responded to this challenge. We have never had an interruption in the distribution of meals to our students and seniors. Our school district was among the first to deliver online learning. Our critical nonprofits have continued to offer their services to our most vulnerable. Our Borough staff continues to provide the highest level of service they are renowned for. Our Office of Emergency Management Director Karen Williams continues to work around the clock to secure, source, and distribute supplies to ensure our healthcare facilities, first responders, and community organizations have what they need. In the month of April alone, this was over 25,000 pieces of personal protective equipment. Everyday citizens have bound together to sew masks, 3D-print shields, source or donate whatever personal protective equipment they may have, volunteer to distribute or deliver meals, and even contribute financially to funds which support our fight and recovery. Perhaps most astonishing is that through the daily collaboration of our school district, our Office of Emergency Management, and critical nonprofits, along with state and county partners, we have been able to distribute over 12,500 meals per week. Although we have come so far, we must continue, if not in some instances double down on our efforts to overcome this challenge together. The simple actions we can take, such as continuing to remain vigilant with our social distancing and wearing masks, have a profound impact on not only our health, but on our entire community. Perhaps the most important thing to remember is that although we are in this together, the suffering we experience as individuals does not fall evenly. In our collective rebuilding, it will be especially important to care for our seniors, those who are ill, and those who are experiencing insecurity of any form. Even though we are apart, I want you to know we are still able to safely celebrate our community together. On Sunday, May 3rd, Phoenixville joined communities throughout Pennsylvania for Bells Across PA to honor our hometown heroes, show solidarity, and demonstrate our collective resolve. I've proclaimed the month of May to be "In This Together: The Spirit of Dogwood Month." Each day will be dedicated to a different theme or activity to celebrate our community, and members of our community can follow along at www.inthistogetherpxv.com/month. Finally, we have affixed over 100 white ribbons to the lampposts along Bridge Street. The color is meant to remind us of the lab coats and traditional uniforms of our healthcare workers, who, as we pay tribute to them, also symbolize all first responders, frontline, and essential workers. The color also reminds us of the Dogwood Flower and our beloved festival. This year, Dogwood will be different. Without a festival or parade, by keeping a part, we are keeping others safe. In the absence of these celebrations, we are perhaps reminded most of what Dogwood really means. The first Dogwood took place in 1943, while as a nation we were in the throngs of World War II. It was never meant to be about rides or floats. It has always been about our collective resilience and the extraordinary people in our community. Dogwood isn't canceled. In fact, we need Dogwood more than ever. We are in this together, and together we will rise. Thank you so much, and please remember, if you or any of your neighbors are experiencing any form of difficulty or need additional information, you can always visit the Borough website or inthistogetherpxv.com. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we'll move into the next item on our agenda, which is appointments and public resolutions. At this time, we're not currently appointing new members to any of our boards or committees, but I would like to make note to the public that are watching tonight that we do have vacancies on our recreation board, on our tree advisory commission, as well as civil service and human relations. So any members of the Phoenixville Borough public that wish to volunteer and take part on any of the boards and commissions, we ask that you reach out to your councilperson or Borough Hall directly, and we can help you through the process. As soon as we start beginning to have normal in-person meetings, again, we will start interviewing and appointing you to these positions. With that, we do have items for consideration under our new business. With the first item on tonight's agenda being the tree removal bid contract as recommended by staff, what is council's pleasure? Or actually, Mr. Manager, if you'd like to give us a background on this item, since this might be news to some folks, is we do have one Borough contractor for this already. This is not a replacement, but an addition to, I believe.
That's correct. The normal contractor handles all of the day-to-day activities, the things that we need to get done due to the weather environment and other things, such as what Mr. Kirchner talked about in our parks. That's just regular maintenance as part of our 12-year program to remove the very aged, mostly pin oaks and what have you throughout the borough, and replace them with trees that are more appropriate to the landscape, as well as to the roadways, sidewalks, water and sewer lines, as well as power lines. We put together a bid package for a three-year program of the 12 years, and we've received three bids, as indicated in your packet. We've identified ProMark as the most responsible bidder, meeting the intent of the program. They came in a little high on the, as I said in the memo, they came in a little high on the first year, but we have some carryover from last year that we weren't able to get to. So Mr. Watson and I will work with, if you approve this tonight, will work with ProMark to either stay within the current budget or work within the parameters of the carryover that we had from 2019.
Very good. And with that, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award the tree removal bid to ProMark Tree Service as recommended by staff for 2020 through 2022.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Soto, seconded by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions on the motion?
I do have a couple. So how will it be decided which trees will go when? Is it by age, or is it not the full list that they bid on? I was kind of going through the list and where they were located.
We actually have about 125 trees in each area. We'll work with ProMark. They've assessed each of the trees and provided an individual number to those. We'll work with them to identify worst to best, best being ones that will hold on the longest until we're able to either meet the financial opportunity to take them all down or have to carry them over into the 2021 budget. But we'll work with ProMark to determine which ones are in need of being taken down earliest.
And then, when we're taking down trees, particularly those either directly on the right-of-way in somebody's front yard, like in the presidential's, or, you know, really in front of somebody's home, how will it be communicated to them that this tree is being removed? And also, is the tree automatically replaced as part of the process of removal?
The answer to the first part of that is, between staff and ProMark, we have a notification process where we send a letter as well as a door hanger to identify which trees are coming down at a specific time. Obviously, if we sent a letter today and we don't get to the trees in August, somebody's going to forget. So we're going to have a rolling introduction as to what happens and when. The second part of the answer is that we only plant trees in the springtime and in the fall, so there may be a gap of six months, up to including a year, before we actually get to replacing that tree. But in our program, we do have funds for both of those categories, take-down and then replacements. Just a matter of when we can get to that. I believe this spring, we planted, Mr. Watson's not available at the moment, but we planted a significant number of trees in the borough, and that's just a process that we'll follow, we'll continue to follow. We do have folks, and I want to make sure that I convey this message, we do have folks that, once a tree is taken down, they don't necessarily want a tree back, but our intent is to replace the tree, but with a tree that's more friendly to all of the things that I associated with. So our hope is to allay the fears that they're not going to get another pin oak and have to deal with this program, you know, 15, 20 years down the road. If you look at some of the areas over, like Virginia Avenue and Anderson and what have you, those trees are so much different than the trees that were there before, the big sycamores and the big pin oaks, that it's, it just looks a lot better. And I think if they see that, they'll be more inclined to let us plant those trees as a replacement.
Okay. That's why I'm dealing with a constituent's concern about a tree that was planted in their front yard, part of the right-of-way. And I just want to emphasize, I would like to get a little bit more information about how we communicate to residents, what they're told, what their expectations are, and make sure that they understand that, you know, we do have ordinances that govern this, and that's not like it's being imposed upon them. To a certain degree, it is, but it is governed by the ordinance.
Correct.
Is that all?
Good, I need.
One final question. Is that all through the, is the selection of trees and so forth, is that going to be separate from the tree advisory commission, or is the tree advisory commission pick the trees and help and work with ProMark and with Brian and the department on that?
As it relates to the selection of trees, we actually establish a listing of trees working with PICO, primarily with PICO, and then with our consultant, Rayad, who's our planning consultant, to identify the types of trees that are appropriate for the street, as well as appropriate for getting green, getting, you know, we don't want to denude the borough of all of the trees, but to replace them with trees that are actually appropriate. So that list of trees, I believe, is in our tree manual, which is identified in the tree ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Next up for consideration is an extension of our electrical generation service contract with our current provider, Constellation, with the staff recommendation of continuing this through December 30th, 2025. In the packets, you'll see the breakout of the proposed savings that are available.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to extend the electrical generation service with Constellation through December 30th, 2025.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, seconded by Mr. Soto. Any questions on this motion or on the electrical generation contract?
Hi. Mr. President, I had a question. I guess more along the lines of, this is kind of coming as we expect electrical rates to increase over the next few months to years. Is that based on this memo, or is that right?
That's correct. We, we're in counseling communication, and remember, this is just the energy side. So PICO handles the transmission and distribution, which are two, the three-legged stool that you get in your bill, those three components. This is the energy side of that. When we started this program, we were upwards of six cents a kilowatt hour. We went down to 4.8, and I believe our finance director, Ms. Lubinski, talked to them today, and I believe if you approve this tonight, we actually will go even a little bit lower below the 4.4, maybe into the 4.3 range, because it's always a rolling. So when you lock in, you get a lock-in rate. And today, she indicated it was in the 4.3s. I don't know that electric can get any much lower. Certainly, over the five-year period of time, we're going to save about $100,000 in electrical costs. So this is a great opportunity. As I said in the memo, the issue at hand is with oil doing what oil is doing right now, is driving natural gas up, which is driving electrical costs up. So if we can lock it in for another 55 months after our year, next year, I think we're doing pretty darn good.
Thanks, Ms. Cracker.
$100,000 savings over five years is a significant and appreciated value. So any other questions for council? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Our next item under new business is a discussion regarding temporary community events. With the pandemic, we've certainly had an interruption to our normal plethora of Borough events. For this, Mr. Cracker.
Sure, we, over the past two months, obviously, as the mayor so indicated earlier in his report, a lot of the, a lot of the events have gone this year, mostly because of social gathering. The big event, obviously, is the Dogwood Festival. We have, as I believe I mentioned in a previous meeting, that the, we have to make a decision by June 3rd as to whether or not we're going to cancel the Fourth of July fireworks. And as I look across the various municipalities across the United States, it's clear that more and more and more are making that decision. Philadelphia hasn't made a decision on the fireworks yet, but they did seem to make a decision on the Welcome America, or whatever the program is, the Philadelphia Folk Festival, going virtual, the WXPN big festival in August. So the topic really lends itself to past Fourth of July, but actually to, you know, do we want to make a decision? And it's a hard decision, I understand this. But do we make a decision in the interest of public safety to go basically through the end of the year and not subject people to costs that are associated with all of their events, up to and including sponsorships and everything else, and make the call that we're just going to not do any temporary community events for 2020? I think just a bigger discussion, it's, obviously, there's a little bit of emotion to that, but at the same time, the responsible component is to help maybe nerd, nudge people that we need to make this work. And so I think it's a discussion. We don't necessarily have to make a command decision in total tonight. We do have to make one for Fourth of July, though. So I wanted to throw that topic out there as a global discussion. You can, you can make the bigger decision. You can help staff make the more immediate decision, and so I tossed it out there for dialogue.
Ms. Dugan?
You gotta hit your mute button.
Oh yeah, I guess that would be helpful.
There you go.
Um, as much as this breaks my heart, I really think that, like, we've been pretty lucky here not having too many, and if we start having any sort of big events in any way right now, I just think that we're going to, we could end up with like an issue here too, like an epicenter here if we do any of these big events. So, you know, I'm like the last person in the world that would want to cancel anything related to the, you know, Parks and Rec Department, but I really don't think that we can, I mean, I don't even personally think that we should be thinking about First Fridays or anything like that. So, my opinion of it.
I certainly have hesitation with the July 4th fireworks. I believe they reported today that Philadelphia was looking to cancel them. I don't know if they finalized that or not, but those decisions will be, everybody's on a similar contract as we are. So I imagine a lot of municipalities and cities will be canceling those events, and particularly since our fireworks are not visible from the entire community, it does seem like it requires a gathering point. I'm not sure if we need to make the decision tonight, or if we want to address that, that staff makes that decision as we get closer, but I would certainly support it the other way.
Yeah, to your point, Mr. Ewald, you know, I know that Philadelphia did announce that some of their other festivals are going to be virtual only. They didn't talk about in detail what that's going to look like, from what I heard, but I did see that. And I would hesitate, I do think, you know, like you said, maybe we don't have to make a decision for the entire year yet, but continue to have those conversations. And certainly, we do need to make a decision about Fourth of July more immediately. I would also like to engage Phoenixville first and talk to them about how do we look at engaging people in different ways as things, and some of that we can't answer yet because we don't, we're still in the red zone. But I do think we need to have those conversations, much like the mayor is taking on the spirit of Dogwood. Can we, can we have those conversations and still be very cautious?
I'll just offer that I think, I guess the Fourth of July, I mean, it's horrifying to me to imagine it. I don't know if during the war, World War II, whether they, because of rationing or something, they canceled Fourth of July and so forth. I can't imagine that there's been a time in the history of our country that we canceled that, but maybe we did. I wonder whether there is in some way, in the larger picture, if we have to address the Fourth of July tonight, I appreciate that. Yeah, we're not going to meet again until the 3rd. We don't want to lose the money. Is there some way building off of the governor's guidelines that would allow any hope of any type of public gathering to occur through the end of 2020? I mean, let's go all the way out and say the Firebird Festival. Do we, do we know if there's any working guidelines now, or are we kind of, would we be saying, even to the, like, the Firebird Festival, they get, they have to go out and get that support? Would we be saying, you know, we wouldn't be giving you even that in December?
Well, the information that I've read, and this is from the Pennsylvania Parks and Rec component, red, obviously no. Yellow, still no. Green is 100 persons or less. And then, until you get to phased out, which is everything's open, and again, that's their guidelines that they've put out. And again, it's very difficult, because you want to, you want to do these things, and you want to, you want to allow people to have something to come forward to, because when we get out of this, if that's a phrase that I could use, to. Because when we get out of this, if that's a phrase that I could use, we're gonna want to do something. And a whole lot of people are going to want to do that. But it's got to be safe. So those guidelines, and you know, there's, there's 50 versions of that or 60 versions of that, depending on, you know, territory, states and federal government, and CDC, et cetera, as to what all of those things mean. I think if you just stay on the science side, forget, you know, which side of the hour, if you just stay with science, science suggests that there's no switch for, for this pandemic, that there's going to be a rolling up and down, unfortunately, where people are going to get sick. And the more that you put them in opportunities where they will gather, the science seems to say that's a bad place. And so I toss, the reason I'm tossing it out there is because as we roll, and maybe that's the way we do it, is we just roll two months in advance, and we say, okay, we're going to start addressing things in July because we're not going to allow anything in June. If the governor gives us a yellow light in June 4, I guess it is, that still doesn't seem to suggest opportunities for for large gatherings. When we go to green, and when that is, then that it's small gathering. So, you know, that suggests that restaurants and maybe stores and things are places to go to, but still not a gathering of 2,000 or 3,000 or 4,000 people for a food truck festival or a firework festival or what have you. So I, it's just, it's just my view from the things that I've read. And I, like you guys, I'm reading things every single day. And there's as many opinions as there are wanting to, you know, open things up. My inclination is to err on the side of safety. But, you know, I toss it out there for your consideration.
And I really agree, Mr. Manager. I also think just kind of stepping outside of my council role and looking at some of, being part of some of the nonprofits that have these events, we're looking at how do we hold events differently? How do we make them virtual? And I think engaging and maybe using Phoenixville First as a vehicle to engage with some of these event organizers, or as borough staff engaging with them, you know, and saying, we can't have these events because of social distancing, but we will work with you if you have something that falls within those guidelines, you know, and we can all together help promote that. But I think, you know, we do have to look at it. It's sad to think of Fourth of July without fireworks. But if we can't have people gathering in masses, then we can't, we can't do it. But maybe we can find a different way to celebrate virtually, you know? And maybe that's not fireworks, it's something else.
Well, just, and, and understand, and this precedes me. I was, I bet, I have benefited from Karen's role in, in all these years in support of the fireworks and what have you. But prior to me coming here, there were years when it was not done, mostly because of funding. So it's not like it's, it's always been ongoing. There have been years where there was no fireworks for different reasons. So I want to, I guess, want to make sure we, we stay on course. We're not canceling the holiday. We're canceling one aspect of it, which is the spending of money for fireworks that a large part of the borough would not be able to see due to social gathering.
And Mr. Manager, I don't think, I mean, I think I couldn't have put it better myself. I think that we have to stop thinking about these things as canceling these events. We have to think about these as like, you know, restructuring, repurposing, and finding ways to support and celebrate these times together, and however we can, based on the context that we have. So right now, that context is looking pretty bleak for a Fourth of July celebration. But to your point, Councilman Moore, I think we can, you know, take a look at what events look like in the future when, as we get there. I don't, I think it's way too early to call anything in December. But I think it's probably apropos to look at something like the, you know, obviously, like the fireworks now, where we really don't see how we can make that work in its current form.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would concur that, you know, three months out, four months out, you know, we're not going to be ready, you know, we have the Blues Festival and a couple other things in September. We're not going to be ready to have people in Reeves Park for that. It's not going to be safe. And, you know, it's possible, I guess, maybe the only thing I'm offering, and kind of the way, is maybe think about, we're, we're going to be saying, we, because we don't want these groups to begin investing time and getting sponsorships and money and so forth. And, you know, including the funds they have to pay us to get a temporary, a TCE. And then have to tell them, well, you know, we'll give it all back to you. Possibly, we can think about postponing through September. And we don't decide that tonight, but we think about that. And we investigate how we can study the issue and see what green really means, you know, two months down the line. Because maybe green, I'm just, I'm trying to be overly optimistic, and I don't have any science to back it. Maybe green by August will allow something bigger. Granted, otherwise, we may have to just be comfortable being old and safe and saying, you know, completely open doesn't happen until the vaccines are available. That's just, that's a heck of a bullet to bite, but he had as a bank. So, all right. I mean, I don't want to prolong the conversation. I would propose that we think about it in a four-month block versus a end-of-year block. But certainly, I would support, you know, announcing that we're, for, for, you're rid of the, having to cancel fireworks, making sure we don't lose our deposit.
Mr. President, can I add something to the conversation? I just, I want, I just wanted to put this resource out there. I know Jean and I look at this a lot, and, and we look at it in conjunction with the Office of Emergency Management. But I would encourage all of the council members, as well as members of the public, if you do go to the chesco.org, to the Chester County website, there is a dashboard that you can actually follow along. And to give you an idea of what it takes to move us today from being in a red zone into a yellow zone, we need to have at least 14 days of a sustained drop under 16 new cases per day. So for 14 days, we would need to have under 16 new cases per day. Today alone in Chester County is 47 new cases. So you can actually see they've added a new element to this dashboard. If you looked at it in the past, they've added a new element called the daily positive and negative tests. And it's a really good indicator to help you see how, how the wave continues. And so it, it is, unfortunately, I wish I could say that we had better news, but I do believe that we are in this for the long haul. This is going to be a much longer term program that we're needing to implement.
Mr. Mayor, you, sorry, Ms. Burkey.
No, no, go ahead.
Just to say, that, that, you're right. I was looking at that today, and it kind of reminded me of like, the, you know, zero days without an accident type of sign that can really put things into more perspective, to go, okay, it's going to be, it's going to be a little longer, I think, until we start really moving in that direction.
And there, there really are three components to it. There's number one, you know, actual social distancing, which we're currently doing. There's another component that is contact tracing. And there's conversations at all levels right now, I think, of government around contact tracing, what that looks like, can it be done electronically? And then the final piece is, is testing. And so all of those elements in combination with the actual number of people are kind of what our, our state government is using. And, and in, in them using it, we also are using it to kind of make some of the decisions that we have from an emergency perspective. And so, and we are fortunate in Chester County. We are the first county to introduce antibody testing. It's being rolled out to our first responders and to our healthcare workers right now. But, so those would be the things I would encourage our members of council and also the public. That's a great resource for everyone.
And I recognize that we are across the river from Montgomery County, and that if we hold events, plenty of the people from a much more impacted county will be coming to us. So, you know, if we're gonna, we, we actually have to be responsible and look at, you know, the larger area of risk, not simply Phoenixville or even Chester County. So.
And again, I think Mr. Crack and Mr. Soto kind of emphasized, like, we're not, we're not canceling the actual holiday. We are saying we have to look at these things differently. We can't gather in a way where people are going to be congregated. But to the spirit of, like, what the mayor's doing with Dogwood, we can look at those things. And that's where I think we have those conversations. I know organizations that have big gals and things are doing online things, or they're doing a scavenger hunt, or things like that. So we, we can look at that, and we can, you know, engage our nonprofits and engage Phoenixville First in that way to kind of keep, keep that spirit alive.
So I, I think that's a lot of good discussion. I think what I'm hearing is that there's support for canceling the Fourth of July fireworks. I think what we can also, what I would suggest is that we work to, to let any of the remaining TCEs know that June is, is not, that we will need to cancel June TCEs. And what we can do is we, and cancel Fourth of July fireworks. And I believe we were planning canceling the Fourth, the July 1 Friday. If that's the case, we can continue to think about this and look how the data comes in at our June meeting and discuss the rest of the summer. I, I would imagine that, looking at the CCE list between now and September, a number of these events are either already borough events that we can cancel ourselves, like August 1 Friday, or there are going to be events that the vendors and the applicants are going to cancel on their own. So if, if that is, I don't, I don't know that we need a motion to do any of that. But I believe we can come back in June, reexamine all of this, and see how far out we have to cast the, the line here.
So is it, so, Mr. President, I guess, your point, you know, there's no, I guess, under the, the status of the emergency, i- is, is what's being used to cancel these events at this time. We don't need to formalize this in any way.
Correct.
Okay, that, I think we should resume, have a, you know, maybe exchange some ideas. That, Ms. Burkey, I, I appreciate your observations, also in the spirit of what the mayor's doing. And maybe we need to, as council people, need to think about that more, and maybe have some ideas that we can do to, to help with that. Do we, do, should we, for manager, should we cancel the TCEs for July and August at this point? I mean, I don't know where we stand with Blob Fest, or a couple of the other summertime events, whether, what's still on the, on the books?
Or do you have them canceled themselves? I think, I think a rolling two months is, is probably a good place. I mean, that 60 days advance. And I, I'm hopeful that most will, will see, you know, quite candidly, I know a number of events, as it relates to sponsorships, the, the sponsorships are just not there. The, a lot of these budgets are taken ahead. And that, that's all discretionary income. So a lot of things that rely on sponsorships versus the actual event is how they make their money. And so, you know, things like golf tournaments and things like big events of that sort, really rely on, on that. And that's waning very fast. The, as it relates, let's talk about Blob Fest as an example. You know, we can control the street part of something, but we can't control the inside of a building. So I think the Colonial would have to decide on their own. And I do believe they're actually talking about that this week, as to what they're, they're likely to do. You know, obviously, if we say we're not going to do, allow people to run into the streets, well, that's the epitome of what the Blob Fest is about. I mean, they have other events on the other days. But the running out of the theater is what is, it's known for. Well, if we're not going to allow them to go out into the streets, we're not going to close the street down and put our police officers out there, then the default is we arguably shut them down. One of us has to make the decision. And it's, I think, July is someplace where we need to look at right now. We know we have events in June. I know Lulu, I think, moved theirs from, I think, either April or May to June. It's clear that we're not going to come out of this that fast. So the June is, is quick and easy. But financially for us, a, the Fourth of July is a, seems to be an easy decision. The, the next part comes into play, the things that are not ours, not First Friday or not Food Truck Festival. Do we tell and make the decision for somebody that we're not going to let you do this? And that's, that was the genesis of this, this discussion tonight.
I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels. I, I'm comfortable that through July we'll not be in a position to address, to have events. Fourth of July is, what, seven weeks away? That's, we're not going to move the needle that much by then. So.
Mr. President.
You know, and again, we can re, we can redress this back, you know, in, in June, we can come back and discuss this again and see what needs to go beyond that. But I, I would be comfortable, you know, canceling all the events through July. Mr. Soto?
Yes, Mr. President, I was thinking that, you know, based on this discussion, it sounds like this is probably something that we should just have on the agenda standing until we deem it necessary to not have on the agenda.
Agreed. Mr. Crack, do we need a motion for any of these items? Or is this, for, can we direct staff to take the necessary measures through July, if that is council's pleasure?
I mean, this, the solicitor thinks differently. I believe the, the conditions established by the various levels of emergency declaration gives us the, the automatic to do these things. If councils, it's more than, we're more advising you about these. But you, certainly you can make a motion to cancel any particular events. But we, I think we've been doing a good job of staying with all of the applicants, and we'll just continue to do that. If you're comfortable, we'll wait until the last day formally, to let the fireworks folks know. But I think the, the ones in June, we're going to tell them that they, they're not going to go. And we'll just continue rolling it that way. And if you're comfortable with that. Mr. Garner?
Yes, Mr. President, I just think that based upon the governor's emergency declaration, as well as council's emergency declaration, almost goes without saying that these, these events can occur. So I don't think you need to do a motion.
And is anybody on council in disagreement with the, the current ideas of, of through July? Okay. Okay. So we'll, we'll keep this on the agenda. We'll continue to review. And I imagine a number of these events, due to a number of factors, will be canceling themselves or postponing to, to later dates. But I think we will continue to just look at this and, and take action as needed. Okay. Very good. With that, we, under new business, we have item D, which is to consider interim development agreement regarding French Creek West slash Steel Point Development. And in your packet, there is information pertaining to the request. I know Ms. Flynn is on the line and can speak to the request, as well as our manager and solicitor to any specific questions to start discussion. Do we have a motion?
Do you, would you prefer to have, give somewhat of a presentation as to what this is about, and then give you the opportunity to make a motion?
Certainly. I will, Ms. Flynn, if you're miked up?
I think so. How's this for everyone?
Good.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for having me. This is a presentation that I have never made before and could not have predicted a few months ago. As you all are keenly aware, because of the discussion that you've just been having, we are dealing with unusual and unprecedented times. We, for Steel Point, have been, since, since we received our approval a few months ago, we've been checking things off of the requirement, the list from the resolution, including finalizing plans that satisfy all of the engineers and planners' letters, and working through development and financial security agreements with your solicitor. working through development and financial security agreements with your solicitor. We had all of that finalized at the beginning of April. And the last item required really to record those plans was the issuance of the bond from our bonding company for the financial security for the improvements on the property. Because of the governor's shutdown and because of the turmoil in the financial markets, our bonding company moved the end line. We were at the two yard line and they moved the goalpost back. They've added additional requirements to their underwriting. We attempted for several weeks to negotiate with them. We offered to provide additional security and collateral for them to entice them to go forward with the agreement and so that we could proceed with development on the site. They have said that they will issue the bonds upon closing on our land development loan. The work that you've already seen out on the site has been self-funded. Rockwell has funded the work that we've done so far and we've proceeded with that work because of our safety concerns on the flood plain and having dilapidated bridges on the site. And so what we propose is that we be permitted to continue with work on the site. And there's a couple of pieces that go with that. First, under the municipality's planning code, a developer does have a right to improve the land prior to recording of the plans at the developer's risk. We would like to have the borough's inspections. We would like to have the borough's buy-in on that. So we asked to be allowed to have those pieces included as we moved forward on the development. Your solicitor rightly pointed out that the financial security protects the borough in the case that if for some reason the work would stop and leave the site in a dangerous situation, the borough would have the funds to correct the danger. And so we came up with this concept of posting an interim financial security agreement where we would post some amount that would allow the borough to make the site safe, that would allow the borough to proceed with inspections as we move forward until we close our site development loan, which we expect in the next four weeks. So we expect that to happen in June. We have a commitment letter. We've provided that to your solicitor and your Borough Manager from WSFS Bank. And so we're we're seeing that there's flexibility required in so many parts of our life and so I guess this is part of that. We're trying to proceed with this project. We, even with all of this, we're still very excited to move forward. We think it's, there's so many reasons why it makes sense right now to continue forward. The, you know, Main Street is closed, so we can get utility connections made. There's less traffic. We're not in the way of those those pieces. So there's just so much that can proceed now. And so we're asking you to to consider allowing this interim agreement to allow us to continue forward. And the work is going to really mostly involve grading on the site, creating sediment traps. It's really the first step to the remediation of that brown field. We'll start to install some of the utilities and the stormwater facilities. And then we'll have our full financial security posted and we will record the plans and move ahead hopefully in the normal course as we all wish we were living our daily life. So that's the idea. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take a shot at them.
Anything else to add from our solicitor or Borough Manager?
Mr. President, I would just say that what Ms. Flynn said is accurate, with the exception, I would say that the terms and conditions of the plan approval would, in my opinion, preclude the applicant from moving forward with site work absent some type of agreement with the borough, which is what's in front of you. But everything else as far as the status of the project, as far as the scope of these limited improvements and everything else that's been going on over the past four months is factually correct to my knowledge.
Agreed. Any questions from council or are any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I do have a question.
Absolutely.
If I may, direct to the solicitor and perhaps the Borough Manager with regard to paragraph number three, A, the stabilization fund of fifty thousand dollars. Is that, and that would be replenished when it gets less to ten thousand dollars? Is that adequate enough to, for a project of this size and scope? Because, you know, I've seen experiences over the years where we've had issues with escrow accounts, certainly smaller projects than this, but is that an adequate amount, fifty thousand dollars and then a ten thousand dollar floor for that?
Mr. Kirkner, we did talk about that and we talked to our engineer. That fifty thousand is destined, in addition to the establishment of the stabilization fund, this fifty thousand is directed towards the consultant inspection fees. And so we'll be able to monitor that in the rolling bills that we get, stay on top of that. And Ms. Flynn has indicated through this agreement that as we tell her we need to reestablish that fund back up, she will do that in, I believe, twenty-five thousand dollar increments. We did talk to the engineer. Based on the type of work that they're doing out there, it's, you're not going to have the types of inspections in this particular instance that you would, once they start to go in and put in the roads, the serious water lines, the serious sewer lines and all of that. That's going to require a lot more level of detailed inspections. But we feel comfortable that this dollar amount is adequate to cover that.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question with regard to that then. So Gene, are you satisfied that the interim agreement specifies just what work will be done under the interim agreement and that any additional, the next phase of work would only begin once the financing and the bond initiates? And we wouldn't be trying to continue to operate for some period of time in some gray area where the interim agreement is the only thing that governs what we have?
That's a very good question. And to be candid with you, I don't think any of us here knows exactly what the end result is, as Ms. Flynn indicated, the financial market is the financial market. So what what they're doing today is they're putting up their own money and obviously hope to get the bond to pick that back up. Whether or not there's a second interim, you know, obviously we're going to look at that with a lot keener eye because this agreement covers things that we can see that are not really going to affect the overall site plan as it relates to us left in a lurch if they were to have to stop. This type of work is really the rudimentary stuff that needs to be done, which is why we're much more comfortable with this. If it were to go into the next stage where now we start to work on roads or maybe the bridge and things of that sort, that would require a heck of a lot different dialogue. We're not there. We hope we don't ever get there. But I can't answer it to say this is the end result of an interim because we don't know. We hope that it's the end of it.
I can say under this agreement, Brian, that the work that they're permitted to do is defined as well as the period of time they have to do that. So it is limited in scope. What happens beyond that I can't say. But in my view, that would require some other further action of council if it ever got to that point. So that's best I can tell you at this point.
Okay, thank you. That clarified that for me.
And with that, what is council's pleasure for the French Creek West interim development agreement?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider the interim agreement.
Who's our second?
This one.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Zoom's lagging a little bit right now. So we have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. With that, we have a number of resolutions for council to consider adopting tonight. The first item under resolutions is, sorry, a Phoenixville Borough Police Department Municipal Cooperation Agreement. If there's background that can be provided by either our police chief or Borough Manager, just so that everybody is understanding the resolution requested.
Mr. President, back on the second of April, actually before that, the district attorney chose to seek a mutual aid agreement amongst the various police departments in Chester County as a whole. I believe, I think the solicitors were kind of on the same page. We don't think that that was really necessary, but it was under the heading of no harm, no foul. We think that it was already there, but it's what they want. So we went into that agreement. Unfortunately, it was between the police departments and not necessarily a complete action of council. So I believe, right and so, this listener felt that it would be more belts and suspenders if we were to do a resolution acknowledging the agreement and then announce therefore and approve the document that was signed by the police department. And Mr. Garner, you can weigh in on that.
I think you explained it correctly, Gene, that the the district attorney and the abundance of caution wanted to get the police departments all on board and our police department did approve the agreement. And I suggested for purposes of insurance and liability issues that we make sure we ratify and confirm that that has occurred. I'm not even sure that any action has occurred under the agreement, but that would be a question for the police department.
Yeah, basically, the agreement allowed municipalities to assist each other in the event that, I guess, a police department in the jurisdiction became incapacitated. So it's basically what this mutual aid was basically backing that up.
It was a manpower thing, Chief, based upon the COVID, that there was a concern of departments not having sufficient staffing, as I recall. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Any questions from council pertaining to the agreement?
It is temporary in nature, just so everyone's aware.
Okay, that's my question. Does it does it need or require a declaration of an emergency or something like that?
Well, everyone all did that, but this is just basically saying during the emergency period, whenever that ends, this agreement ends.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move we approve the resolution authorizing the Phoenixville Borough Police Department to enter into the inter municipal cooperation agreement to establish mutual aid by and among municipalities in Chester County.
Second and a question. A motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Mr. Soto, I believe. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Our second resolution to consider adopting tonight is a submission of a DCED Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant Application for the new pedestrian bridge over the French Creek. This would be the bridge that connects the downtown to the former steel site. Mr. Crack, is there any background that you'd like to provide for this application? It seems pretty straightforward for an element that we'd like to have.
There's a, the Greenway, as the name suggests, Greenways Trails and Recreation. It's an opportunity that we're able to get funding. It's actually the funding mechanism that we secured funding previously from DCNR, same sort of scenario. Take the Montclair Bridge, get that work done. This one would, and I think hopefully in your packets, you saw some pictures of a bridge in another municipality, I think Whitehall, I believe it was, up in Lehigh Valley. The interesting thing is this bridge has to be about two hundred and thirteen feet long because it has to land. If you know our parking lot, you know, there's a little walkway that goes to the trail right behind Borough Hall. It has to start there and literally go all the way across the creek over this Skooko Trail that exists today and then land where the Steel Point Project is going to have its roadway. So it has to span that entire distance. We have the opportunity to apply for funding through the program. And so we saw, you know, this opportunity and decided throw it at you and see if there's interest to let us pursue the grant.
And what is council's pleasure in adopting this resolution?
Mr. President, I make a resolution to authorizing the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the construction of a bridge across French Creek.
We have a motion by Mr. Bor, second by Mr. Weiss to adopt the resolution. Yes, Ms. Dugan?
I have a question for Mr. Crack. I see all these grants that we're about to apply for and I'm a little bit concerned that do we have any shot at actually getting these? Are they actually still going to be handing out money? Because I'm just worried about the situation that we're in. You know, everywhere.
That's a valid point. The the position that as we look at these things, there's a perspective that because of all the money that's being spent, that the federal government and the state is going to pull back on the available funding for different kinds of programs. Then there's the other perspective, which is they're going to try to get work done to get people back to work. In two thousand and one, that's what happened. In two thousand and nine, that's what happened. Some of you may remember the, I think it was called Arrow or Tiger Funds that the federal government came out with. We're in a very good place in that we've got a lot of projects that we're in the position of being what we call shovel ready. So we know that we can go get these things if and when that funding is available. And so when we do these types of applications and we set ourselves up to be candidly in front of the first in the line. And if they're good projects, and especially here in Pennsylvania, the Skooko River Trail is a high priority trail system in the Commonwealth. And so it tends to get a lot more money for those that are ready to do things, which is, as you know, we've been very successful in completing the trail. And hopefully in the next month, we'll complete the Montclair Bridge portion of it. This will add us the opportunity to not only connect a very significant development into the downtown, but also then make the next connection, which is to take the trail behind Borough Hall on the south side of the creek and go all the way backward to where Ms. Flynn and her project will have that bridge over off of Paradise Street override hopefully where the fire station is going to be. So it's, we're thinking long-term strategy and that's why we go after these applications.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I guess this would be for the I I guess this would be for the the manager. One, this is a shovel ready project, yes or no? I I think it's yes and. The the boroughs match is fifteen percent. What is that number approximately? What's the overall cost of this bridge?
We're estimating this, the believe it or not, this is going to be about an eight hundred thousand dollar project. So we have a couple more places we have to pursue grants, which is, that's how we do stuff. We'll go to Chester County as well as another area in in actual D C D beyond the the Commonwealth, I'm sorry, not D C D, D C and R. Beyond the Commonwealth Finance Authority. So we've got one or two more steps before we get there. Ultimately, we'll have about a fifteen percent match where. The borough may have to put some cash in, but as you know, we've worked very hard at getting the the leverage of other funds to make these projects work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? On the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next on our resolutions to consider adopting tonight is one regarding the submission of a D C E D Sewage Facilities Program Grant. To go towards a SOMAX project. Again, Mr. Crack, I'll defer to you for a little bit of background, but I believe it's similar to the last one.
It it very much is. As you know, we received funding, I believe it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the county. For the replacement of the infrastructure inside the the greenhouse. What this would do is pick up that match that that they were required from the county. And that takes it out of the overall cost that we had budgeted for the the actual installation and equipment, so. We're leveraging, again, we're leveraging one grant against the other to try and to diminish the amount of money that the borough actually puts into these programs.
Any questions from council? I'm sorry, we what is council's pleasure regarding adopting this resolution?
Mr. President, I move we adopt the resolution. Authorizing the submission of the Sewage Facilities Program Grant to the Commonwealth of Commonwealth Financing Authority. To support the SOMAX project at the water treatment plant.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And our fourth resolution to consider adopting tonight is regarding a submission to the Chester County Community Development Block Grant. For the Gay Street Streetscapes Improvement Project.
Mr. President.
I started to hear a motion. You want me to explain first?
I I believe her mic cut out before she finished making, so Ms. Berkeley, did you want to finish that motion?
Either way, if you want. Mr. Crack to give some background, that's fine.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
As I think. I don't remember if it was last month or which month it was, but we we previously approved. An application, a CRP Community Revitalization Program. Application for the the Gay Street and as you know, that was a that was a very significant dollar amount. Of funding, we were only eligible to apply for a certain amount, which was, I believe, about half of that. I'm probably going to text from Kelly telling me what the the actual number was. But what we wanted to do is double down because we can between CRP and C D B G. And if we can get both of those grants, then the vast majority of that project will be paid for through through those two grant fundings. So that's what this is for. It's again, we're trying to leverage one grant against another to diminish the amount of money of hard money that the borough has.
So, Mr. President, I will make a motion to consider the resolution regarding the submission of the Chester County Community Development Block Grant for the Gay Streets. Streetscapes.
We have a motion to adopt by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Soto. Questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That concludes our resolutions for the evening. Moving on to item eleven or section eleven of our agenda tonight, I don't believe we have any public hearings. And as for. Mr. Crack, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we have any reports or committee from committees, boards or commissions.
I I don't, Mr. Kirchner, Ms. Dugan and Mr. Soto would be more appropriate to respond to their their committees.
Very good.
To report, Mr. President.
Ms. Dugan?
There's nothing.
And Mr. Kirchner?
There there was no regional planning committee meeting. Nothing to report.
And there's no planning commission nor HAB this month either, so.
The borough, the borough council. There will be a Phoenixville Planning Commission meeting, virtual meeting Thursday evening at seven. And it will be online similar to this this one.
Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen on our agenda. Council action referred from council committees. Ms. Dugan, or sorry, Mr. Soto for Parks and Rec. Ms. Berkeley for police personnel, public safety.
No.
Mr. Weiss for I T T.
No action to report.
And that brings us to finance. Ms. Dugan?
I'm going to bundle one through six, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty prepaid dated. Two nineteen twenty twenty to three thirteen twenty twenty in the amount of nine hundred and forty five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty one cents. To approve the twenty twenty prepaid dated three fourteen twenty twenty to four nine twenty twenty in the amount of seven hundred and eleven thousand twenty four dollars and forty eight cents. To approve the twenty twenty prepaid A C H dated two twenty nine twenty twenty in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy seven dollars and forty cents. To approve the twenty twenty prepaid A C H dated three thirty one twenty twenty in the amount of three thousand five hundred and forty nine dollars and ninety cents. To approve the twenty twenty prepaid credit card statement dated two twenty nine twenty twenty three thirteen twenty twenty. In the amount of fifty thousand one hundred and fifty four dollars and thirty four cents. And to approve the twenty twenty prepaid credit card statement dated three fourteen twenty twenty. To four nine twenty twenty in the amount of seventy thousand seven hundred and three dollars and twenty eight cents.
I'll second that.
So the motion bundling items one through six of the finance committee report made by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions on this motion? Seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And Ms. Dugan?
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Funding for the installation of three sets of speed bumps on High Street at a cost of five thousand dollars, which was recommended in committee form.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Dugan, seconded by Mr. Soto. Questions on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else, Ms. Dugan?
Looks like I could have bundled that with the rest of them, but I thought I'd put it out there, so now we're.
Thank you. With that, with the help from borough staff, we will now open the second round of public participation. Again, we just want to remind anybody viewing at home that. Participants participants must log in as a guest and provide their name and address by a live stream in order to participate. If you do enter your information and your question, your comment will be received and read aloud by borough staff so that all of council. Can hear the question. And just bear with us as there is approximately a ten second delay between. Your questions coming in through the live stream chat and us hearing them through our borough staff, so.
Mr. President, we do have one comment from the public. It's from a Mr. David Letzger of two forty three Morgan Street. He would like to. Send his compliments to the council for moving forward with borough business despite the pandemic. It is challenging time and flexibility and creativity are needed to meet the needs of the community while still staying safe. Walking the line that is not clear cut is difficult, so it is encouraging to see today's agenda with projects that are moving forward. He looks forward to seeing continued developments, of course, within the confines of public safety. He hopes that his comments were not too much. But he does appreciate the opportunity to have his public participation this evening.
Thank you. We'll just give it a few more moments to see if there's any other public comment to come in through the live stream system. Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll move on to staff reports, which. Were all submitted within the packets. Anything else to report, Mr. Manager?
The only thing that I would report is as of right now, all of our. Committee meetings for May are on hold, meaning that they're canceled with the exception. We'll have a finance committee meeting on the twenty Tuesday, the twenty sixth to keep business rolling. And I'll talk to Ms. Berkeley as to whether or not we will have a a police and personnel for June. As it stands right now, we probably won't. And as it stands right now, we'll probably have a council meeting virtually. But we'll we'll continue as we were with T C Es with all of the committees and everything else. We'll continue to roll those. Across and and a consult from all of council before taking, you know, and. Not having a meeting or or doing something, but this this seems to work. Our real test, quite candidly, is going to be Thursday night. We've got three sets of plans to review. That's going to take a lot of coordination to to manage that process, but our team is. Been a trial run about five thirty tonight. We think we're ready to go. So our job is to keep business moving forward, even if we have to do it through this medium. It seems to work. One day we'll all be back in the room, but we'll do it this way for a while.
Mr. Manager, I do appreciate that. I I do want to just say that I I do thank all of our departments, our managers, our department heads and all the staff. For keeping the borough running as smoothly as it has. There are many municipalities around us that have not fared as well during this crisis. I think for the most part, all of our services and quality of life. Items that we we deliver to our community have have gone on without skipping a beat and. We really do appreciate that from from all of the staff, all of the department heads and and everyone. There's a lot of things that go on in this borough that keep everything running smoothly and I don't think there's been much. Much skipped over in the last nine weeks, so it's quite a. Quite a challenge to have undertaken and I do appreciate it.
Good, thanks.
With that, we are at the end of our agenda.
President, a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Soto.
Second.
Second by Ms. Berkeley, all in favor? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night. Stay well.